And I hope that we can have a good meeting and and get everyone's questions answered and have a nice robust discussion about the project in Ahuimana. I'm Jared Keho Kalole. I am the state senator for District 24, which goes basically from Olomana to Ahuimana Road. And I've been privileged to serve you folks in Ahuimana for the last eight years. And I'm really happy to be on with you folks. Just to start off, we'll do some introductions and then, you know, essentially, I'd like this meeting to be a dialogue between the folks who would like to assume kuliana and responsibility for the historic site. And everyone who has any questions, there's a there's a process that they will be engaging in here soon. It will involve you and everyone in the community. And so, and so, like I said, we're glad to have you on. A couple of things real quick. I have the Senate. This is a this is a Senate meeting. And as a result, we are going to try to moderate this meeting in a way that provides a safe space for everyone to share their thoughts, but also maintain some order in the meeting so that things don't get out of hand. I would ask everyone to use their discretion. If you know how to engage the raised hand signal on Zoom when we get to the Q and A, I would ask that you do that so that I can keep track of everyone who has questions or who would like to share, because we would like to keep a hard 90 minute timeline on this meeting. I may ask that you summarize your questions or comments when we get to the Q and A period, and then you can always engage in questions or comments in the chat. And we'd be happy to follow up with you thereafter. And on that note, we'll start with we'll get started and start with introductions and we'll begin with Representative Kitagawa, who really deserves a lot of credit for helping take the lead on on keeping the community informed on this project and trying to facilitate things as we've gone forward. So Representative Kitagawa.
Thanks so much, Senator Keho Kalole. Hi, everyone. I'm Lisa Kitagawa. I represent District 48, which includes parts of Kaneohe, all the way out to parts of Waiohule, so Ahuimana was included in that. And, you know, I just wanted to sort of start off by just saying thank you to all of you for being here tonight. And then also just share a little bit about how I got sort of involved in this site, as well as what I've sort of been doing the past couple of years per the request of some community members. So thank you, you know, to the community members who are on this meeting tonight, who have been over the many years been helping the state to steward this area here, which is between Lile and Heno Place. And so, you know, there have been community members who have been caretaking when the state really should have been, but the state was not going out on a regular basis. And so we've been working, my office, with community members to try to maintain parts of this land that we're going to be talking about. And so I've been in contact with community members as well as with DLNR to try to make sure that, you know, certain dangerous trees are taken care of, to try to get them to do more routine maintenance. We even introduced legislation last year to try to encourage DLNR to do that. And so that's sort of been how I started getting involved in this location. And, you know, there are community members on here who have really taken that lead and been partners with the state and we're very appreciative to them. And so we've had numerous conversations about this Loi site over the past year or so with various community members and with different groups. And so, you know, as Senator mentioned, you know, this really is an opportunity for everyone to sort of understand where we're trying to go with this project and how the community can be involved. And as Senator mentioned, my desire has always been that the community be informed, because this is where you live, right? This is your home. And we want to make sure that everything that happens is transparent and all of you feel like you have a say and you can get all of your questions answered before we move forward. So we're really thankful that so many people are here tonight so that you can be informed. And for your neighbors who may not be here, we ask that you share this information with them so that everyone can be as informed as possible. And we look forward to hearing all of your questions tonight and hearing the information from Hiiaaka as well. So thank you, everyone, for being here.
Thank you, Representative. Next, we'll have Hiiaaka.
Aloha. My name is Hiiaaka Jardine. I grew up on Hui Ulili Street, so Ahuimana is my oneehanau and kind of how I got involved with this project is in my in my time at UH Manoa and at Winter Community College, pursuing my civil engineering degree, I always wanted to kind of bridge engineering and culture and give back to community and so was able to do so or potentially do so with this space. So that's sort of my connection and inspiration for being here tonight. Mahalo.
Okay, great. Next, we'll have Regina Hilo from the Department of Land and Natural Resources.
Aloha, everyone. My name is Regina Hilo. I am a history and culture specialist. Very outside specialist in the history and culture branch of the State Historic Preservation Division. I'm familiar with the space. I kind of have worked within the department to help to ensure that the trees that have been identified as being dangerous are removed, are tagged for removal, and then are removed responsibly. So this is like one of my kuliana in addition to the things that I do at the state. Mahalo.
Okay, great. And next, we'll have Nick Beluzzo from ASM Affiliates.
Hello, hi, everyone. I'm Nick Beluzzo. I'm a principal archaeologist and the Honolulu Office Director for ASM Affiliates. I live in Kaneohe and I, should this project proceed, I've offered to donate my time as well as some of my staff and office resources to help with some of the compliance issues and the things that would need to be done. Thank you.
Okay, great. So next, we'll have Hiiaaka come back on, present a little bit of the history of the site and then the project proposal.
Okay, can we get the slides up? Okay. Yes, that's great. Thank you. Okay, so we're gonna talk a little bit about the history of Ahuimana in general and then specifically about the Kahalu Ulo'i. And then kind of go into what our proposed project would look like. And then, next slide. Okay, and then Jen is gonna gonna take over from here for a little bit.
Okay, aloha, everybody. I call them my for me not being on the camera. I got home with a bunch of kids and I just came from the beach. My name is Jennifer Nakamura. I am a co-founder of Ka'auulu Okahalu alongside Hiiaaka Jardine. And just a quick history, you know, the creation of this hui was born out of a need. When we saw that there was a stewardship application for this site years ago, and there was no community meeting that we were aware of. We're trying to find out if there had been community input and that was kind of where the inspiration for us was, okay, well, we need to find people in Kahalu who want to talk about this. And so we, you know, made personal calls. We talked to people in our neighborhoods. We ended up getting about 100 people from Kahalu just to become a hui. And basically, the mission of the hui is to malama the people, resources, history, wahipana, and community well-being of Kahalu. And the vision is to be an established collective of voices to advocate for the Kahalu community. So even though I was inspired by wanting to malama this space and be aware and make sure that all of us have a voice in this situation, it's not specifically an organization that was created for this space, just so that's clear. It's for Kahalu in general. Yeah.
Mahalo, Jen. I'm gonna ask Luca and then Phil if they could introduce themselves since they're sort of part of our hui and and part of this proposed project.
Hi, everyone. My name is Lucas Alves. Are you able to hear me? Yeah, okay, okay. The green light's not coming up around my face. That's why I'm like, oh, no. Anyways, my name is Lucas Alves. I live on Hui Iko Place, right next to Ahuimana Elementary School, and that's where I went to school since I was little. And I first went to the Loki terraces, I think, in second grade, when we went there on a field trip and then just fell in love and was exploring the area until I left for college. And then kind of forgot about it until I came back to Hawaii to come back home and was able to take my son up there and we fell in love. And I was just like, I have spent my life doing conservation work all across Oahu, but never at home. And then when I saw that there is an effort going on to do something in my own backyard, I jumped on it. I was like, how can I cook? And so I'm really just happy that we're all coming together to be able to breathe life back into this space, to be able to have it more than just a random kind of illegal hiking area and actually be a productive place for our children and for our community to come together to grow food again. And I will pass it off to Phil.
All right. How's it, everybody? Can you hear me? Good? Okay, I'm Philip Kapu. I'm from Kahalu. I live in Kahalu. My family, as far as I know, multiple generations, at least five, has lived in Kahalu, still live on the same property. The terraces entered my life when I was in third grade. I was in student council at Kahalu Elementary. And we got to go on a field trip there and I never, it just never left my mind. And I started working in conservation as I got older. I work for Oahu Species and Species Committee now. And I see terraces everywhere in the mountains and they're just covered and when I heard about Ka'auulu Kahalu through, I think, my cousin, I jumped at the chance to be able to, like Luca, work in my own backyard and restore something that's so, 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 so valuable and such a treasure. And yeah, that's where we are now.
Mahalo. Okay, can we go next slide, please? Okay, so just a little background about this specific parcel that we're talking about this evening. It is referred to as the Kahalu Terolo'i, but also can just be called Kahalu Ulo'i. It's located on Hui Kailu Street between Lile and Heno Place. It is in the Ili of Ahuimana in the Aua of Kahalu in Ko'ala Poko. This is the TMK, if anybody was interested in looking into it. The parcel is 13.774 acres of preservation land and is under the responsibility of State Historic Preservation Division. And then this is a site number for shifty. Sorry, can we go back real quick? Just I wanted to make one more point before we move on. So if we're looking at just this specific Kahalu Ulo'i, the actual agricultural complex goes beyond this highlighted parcel in blue. It extends Ma'aka. And it also, at one point, did extend partially Makai, but we're not sure if the Makai portions are still there today. For sure, the Ma'aka portions are there. And that city and county land at the top. Okay, thank you. Next slide. Some history about Ahuimana in general. Ahuimana means a gathering of birds. So in pre-contact times, there would have been an abundance of native birds in this space. And then one of the kind of oldest stories of Ahuimana is when Hiia'a Kapolio Pele, the favorite sister of Pele, she comes into Hiia'a and she meets a sick couple. And she instructs them to hike into Poli'ka. So Poli'ka is on this map to the right, sort of in the upper right corner. And it is a place where freshwater does feed Ahuimana stream, and that's why we have a constant flow of water through Ahuimana. And then sort of the next notable period in time is when Kamemera III gives 216 acres to the French Catholic Mission to start a school. And that was in 1845, and the school was there until about 1881. And the school was actually the forerunner for what is St. Louis School today. And I think the purpose of that was for them to educate the kids, but also give right to the native tenants of that land. And sort of once they had fulfilled that kuliana, the land was supposed to revert back to the kingdom. But then we have change in government. So the French Catholic Mission holds on to the land, leases it to Ahuimana Ranch. And so we have rice in the area. We have sugar and pineapple and all of that stuff from the plantation days. And then we have hygienic dairy. So that is also tied to hygienic store in Kahalu down the road. And then eventually it goes into the hands of developers. So we have Valley of the Temple Corporation and then we have Ahuimana Joint Venture. And thank you. Next slide. So then the next notable event in time is in 1972, when the UH Manoa Anthropology Class comes in under the direction of a grad student. His name is there on the bottom of the screen to the left. So what they did was they basically studied and surveyed the system to the best of their ability in 1972. So that's the map you're seeing here on the left. And and from that study, they found that there was over 100 intact terrace Loi retaining walls. There, sort of at the top of the agricultural complex, there is heau and upright stones and just, you know, an abundance of really special stuff. So it's really it's really epic that they were able to capture it. And and a lot of that stuff is still here today. And so shortly after they do that, it gets registered on the National Historic Register, both federally and with the state. So within that historic register, it says that this is the largest intact terrace Loi system on Oahu. And it's the best example of ancient Hawaiian expertise in this type of engineering. What else? What else? Oh, so yes, there also is an ads quarry. There is abundance of springs back there, just just some really cool stuff. So yeah, mahalo. Next, next slide. So then in 1984 is when DLNR comes in and they get some funding to do an interpretive trail. So this is the the images from that time period. So on the left, we can see some of that signage. And if you're familiar with the site, that signage is still there today. It's a little beat up, but it's still there. So if you know where the first sign is, this is the first sign here on the left. And you can see that rock wall in the background. And then on the right, they installed rebar to kind of go up and over some of the walls and the terraces so that people could navigate through them as an interpretive trail, but not damage any of the archaeology in there. Okay, mahalo. Next slide. Okay, so a little bit more images from that time period. So you can kind of see what the space would look like if it were to be cleared again. So on the left here, you see a nice rock wall formation, a nice trail that they had made through it. On the right, they were able to clear a nice three tier terrace. And I don't know if you can notice, there's a little bit of a glare on the photo to the right. But like right below that glare, there's like this pretty prominent large pohaku or rock. And then we can go to the next slide. And so this is the current conditions today. So if we're looking again at the photo on the right, that kind of large prominent pohaku that's there, that is the same one from the previous photo in the 80s. So you really get the idea of of kind of what was and what could be and what we're looking at today. And on the left is kind of some of that rebar. It's old, it's deteriorating, it's not really safe anymore. So just maybe I'll have Phil, if can, real quick, talk a little bit about maybe your Kupuna Poi Poi, pohaku building and native and invasive plants, fast kind?
Okay, um, so one of my connections to this place in learning Hawaiian culture, one of the main things you learn is your Mokau, where you came from. I have a few connections to this place. One was my grandpa David Kapu was a kolo farmer in the census in the 1920s. And I'm sure he worked somewhere around in these Loi that we had here. Another the same time generation, my great grandma's grandpa is Joseph Moko Hi Poi Poi, who was a very famous Hawaiian scholar who went to the Ahuimana College in this area where he learned an extremely incredible amount of knowledge, spoke four languages. And later on in life, tried to preserve through all the newspapers Hawaiian culture, Hawaiian oli chat stories, Hawaiian practices in general, translated things from English into Hawaiian so we could learn this new system that was taking over. So that's another connection here. And if I can talk about the natives and non-native species. Almost everything you see in these pictures are non-native. How you can see in this picture with the big pohaku. Wolf, it's a Polynesian introduced plant. We brought it here because it was one of the best fire making woods. And when uncontrolled, it'll take over an open space like we seen in those pictures from the 80s. And how many years is that now? Forty years now. I was gonna say 20 years. It's about 40 years now. This is what can happen with non-native plants. Almost everything that we see covering the terraces full of inkberry, these monotopic invasive plants kind of destroy the whole entire place, its uses. And it's it's hard, it's very, it's hard to get rid of. But like we said, that kuliana is here for us to take over now. And yeah, it looks like it's a lot of work looking at these pictures. But it's doable. Yeah.
Okay, mahalo, Phil. What Phil didn't mention too is that he, he also does traditional pohaku rock wall building. You want to touch a little bit about?
Yeah, sorry. I can talk about Uhahuma Pohaku, one of the reasons why this place is so special. I practice, I'm a student in Uhahuma Pohaku. One of the beautiful things about this place is the walls are still standing. There's, I work in the mountains every single day. Come across terraces, come across cattle laws, newly built things. One of the most beautiful things is for hundreds of years, these Hawaiian walls that incorporate Uhahuma Pohaku that are built in a certain way. All the rocks are placed with intention. Every single stone is placed a certain way. These walls are still standing even with all these invasive plants growing through them, moving them around. It's truly a magnificent, like, engineering feat. So it's, it's pretty important to to work with what we got here while we still got it, basically. Yeah.
Mahalo. Thank you for sharing. Okay, and then next slide, please. Okay, so I just wanted to share a little bit of like the cultural sites and artifacts that we can find, like not only on the state parcel, but also in the more Moka regions. So on the left, we have a picture of a koi or a traditional ad which would have been used for kind of cutting and other uses. So this was found in the state parcel. We just kind of documented it and then put it back in its rightful place. But there is an ads quarry on site. So what that means is if we're looking here at the photo on the right, if you look inside of this kind of structure, there's a lot of these really rectangular shaped rocks all throughout the site. And they kind of get bigger as you get to the more Moka regions. And that's only because it naturally is formed there in the Poli'ka region. And so this this sort of site on the right side, we're not exactly too sure what its function is, but you can't tell, but it's built into a rock wall that extends out on both ends. So it's a really cool thing. And we're looking forward to studying that. Another thing that is kind of cool about like this entire parcel is that there are endangered species in the stream. There's two types of Oahu, two types of Opaia and two types of snails. And that is coming from a 1981 report that Nature Conservancy did. Okay, mahalo. Next slide. Okay, so what we're proposing for the time being is to work in this space right here. So if we're looking at the sort of that back right side of this photo, we see some metal pillars. And so that's kind of going to be our boundary going this way. So we're not gonna go into the forest line, right? Like, we're just gonna stay in the area prior to the metal pillars. And then there's a house over there on the corner to like the back left corner over there. That's the boundary on that side. I believe the sidewalk is also sort of the kuliana shifty, so we would be responsible for upkeeping the sidewalk. So what we want to do is just kind of cut the grass and maintain it because we know that the neighbor next door has been really the one to be taking care of it for the past 30 years, cutting the grass, maintaining overgrown trees or asking the state to to kind of come and maintain. So we'll cut the grass. The plan is to clear all of that overgrowth we see in this left side of the photo, keeping that banana tree in the middle. And then there's that big false company there just to the right of the banana that would also stay in place. That's not going to be touched. So I guess the neighbors at one point in time did ask the state to come and cut some of these trees closer to the sidewalk. And you can kind of see that they're a little bit taller stumps there next to the sidewalk. And that's from when the state came and previously cut. And there are also logs that are sort of laying there in between those stumps. And it's my understanding that the neighbors also put them there to deter people from reversing in and doing illegal dumping. So we're gonna leave the stumps. We're gonna leave the logs that are sort of parallel to the sidewalk to deter anybody from getting easy access into that space. So what we want to do is just cut all of that large overgrowth. And we would have community members with chainsaw certification do that work. And then we would just mulch all of that green waste on site, like exactly where it was cut is exactly where it's gonna get mulched. Because what you don't see inside of all of that overgrowth, I don't know if you can see over here, I don't even know if you can see my mouth, but over here on the left side of the photo, like kind of behind that light pole, there is like a dip in the sidewalk, like it was a driveway. So there was a driveway and all of the concrete under there is all broken up. So instead of us trying to touch and dig into the concrete and potentially open a can of worms that we don't know how to close, the sort of the approach is to cut and mulch and just cover that concrete. And also next to that big false company, sort of to the right of that banana tree, there's a large concrete like rectangle and looks like it would have been a foundation for a house. Because there's also a bunch of housing or roof tile right behind that. So this site was actually going to be a house. So I'm not sure what else is kind of lurking in that space. So we're gonna have Nick from ASM Affiliates be with us on site. You know, if for whatever reason we run into something, we have an archaeologist on site. And then we hope to do at least a once a month maintenance on this site so it doesn't get out of hand again. And then potentially, because we're waiting on final approval from shifty, so with their approval and with community support, we would clear this front area and then we would start documenting some of the historical sites. And so that would not, to my knowledge anyway, entail any large tree removal. But it's more so for just documenting purposes, right? Just getting in there and making sure that the things are still there. And that's sort of the start of the archaeology, sorry, AIS process. Phil, Luca, Jen, you guys wanna add anything to this part? Did I miss anything?
I, I think just maybe letting people know that, um, you know, through all these steps and getting to this point where there is even a plan. There were many, 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 many communications with not only people in the state, but also nonprofit organizations. And other people like we have a Kai'au'lu, Okahalu reached out to some kupuna. And I forgot to mention, we did kind of pull together a few people to kind of guide us as a kupuna council in Kahului. That includes, you know, a few families that have been here, including the Pelikais for a long time. We felt that that was important because in wanting to Malama the space, we did wanna do it the right way, the way that our kupuna would do it. And so we did speak with people that are, you know, elders of this area. Um, and one of the things that, that we did also prior to even deciding about having a plan for this Malama the space was, um, finding out about liability insurance. There was a lot of questions and we had to dig and, and talk to lots of people to find out legalities of even having people come and do this. And that's why when she mentioned there's gonna be certified people operating machinery, you know, this is all very, um, being looked at in a very cautious and meticulous way, just so that we can make sure that, um, we do it as pono as we can.
Okay, mahalo Jen. You know what, what I, maybe I should share also is that me and Senator Kyo Kalole did and Luca as well walk around the neighborhood on Sunday and talk to a few neighbors that were outsider, did answer their door, um, not only to bring awareness to tonight's town hall meeting, but also to kind of let them know what our plan is. And then last week, Wednesday, I did get, uh, support from the Kahului Neighborhood Board to just work in this front area. Yeah. Can we go next slide? Okay, so I just wanted to address some of the concerns, um, that, that I've heard from community members and homeowners. I know that parking is definitely an issue because there's not too much of it. So I, I did call, um, the director over at Kahului Regional Park, and he did say that the park there is public parking. And so if we wanted to have people park there and then shuttle them to Ahui Manu, that wouldn't be an issue because Board of Water Supply currently does that when they do their tours of Waheh Tunnel. Um, and also Ahui Manu Park could potentially be a space to meet and then shuttle people so that we don't have an influx of, of cars. Something I forgot to mention earlier, sorry. Shipti is telling us that we can only have ten people on site at a time. And I think the importance of that was so that there's not too much people and they're not stepping or touching things that they, they potentially could damage. So in keeping the group small, it, it protects the site. So and I live right down the street on Huilili. So I'll be walking and I'll ask some of my, my immediate we members to kind of park by my house if can. And then we can just walk up to mitigate some of that parking. I know illegal activity was another one. Um, I know that's hard to mitigate, but you know, I think by us having a presence there and beautifying the area, it will actually deter people from participating in that kind of activity. But we also have a dog care officer assigned to this space, Jason Lee. And I know that he's not on twenty-four seven, but he is of the community and he does care about about this site. So I think that's actually something to kind of count as a win for now. And deterring illegal activity is gonna be a community effort. And then another one is noise. So right now, we're not gonna be making big noise. But if we do get a formal curatorship application with DLNR, there will come a time when we will have to cut big trees. And the big trees will make big noise. So as much as possible, um, we'll try to communicate that kind of stuff with free folks. Like if there's something that's really gonna be bothersome, um, or intrusive, we will let you folks know. It's only gonna be right during day hours. We wouldn't be working at night, anything like that. There are hunters that go into this site. Uh, I've seen, I've seen a couple of them. They usually go at night. Um, and sort of our approach to mitigating too much hunters is to get our kupuna council to get there, kind of similar to what Kako Evi did. They have their kupuna council determine which families could go and hunt. And then hikers, there's already an abundance of, of illegal hikers. Um, and that is due to geo-tagging and social media. So if our, if our group were to be there, right, we would ask people not to geo-tag, um, but to maybe just tag our organization so that we could have controlled and responsible hiking and visits into this space. It's not our intention to publicize ourselves over social media. That's definitely not what we want because it makes restoring the site harder. But this site is already all over social media and multiple websites. So if we're there, we're able to have conversations with these people about responsible internet and social media use. Yes, next slide, please. Okay, so while today we're only asking for community support in just clearing this front area and starting to document the sites. To be transparent, we do wanna let you folks know what we envision long term. So we do have a small kupuna council. We have Uncle Clifford Lu and his grandfather was a student of the original Ahui Manu College. He's been in Kahului, um, his Ohana has been in Kahului for many generations. And so he is with us on the kupuna council. And then we also have Auntie Alice Hewitt, and she is also a Kupuna of Kahului or a generational family of Kahului. So we definitely wanna engage them. As we progress and we build capacity in this space and, and with the project. We also wanna do an archaeological inventory study, which Nick from ASM Affiliates has graciously offered to, to support us with. In more of like a piecemeal fashion, because there is a lot of sites in there. And so we're gonna just kind of start slow and, and make sure that we're doing it well. Uh, we also need to do a preservation plan after that AIS. We do wanna create a nonprofit specifically to steward this space. Um, and I think that's really important, right? Like, because right now Kaia'ulu Okahalu is such a broad vehicle that I don't think that it would be the best course to steward this space. Like this space deserves its own vehicle. So that's also a goal of ours. We do want community partnerships. We wanna do Ina-based them programs with our Kiki and the community. Uh, we would like to see native forest restoration because if the forest is healthy, right? The sites are healthy, the people are healthy. Uh, we wanna increase our food security and resiliency, strengthening community connection to Ina. We want place-based education, revitalizing traditional farming methods and practices, and protecting the endangered species that do exist in this space. Uh, next slide, please. So here's just a rough timeline of what things look like from now and then, you know, into the future. So step one right now is getting that final permission and, and finalizing language on Shipti and what they're gonna allow us to do. Um, and then this town hall, right? Making sure that we have community support, that everybody has a chance to say, um, if they have any concerns or they, they want something to be implemented, um, that's important. And, and once we kind of get past that, then step two, just clearing that front area, maintaining, um, not letting it get out of hand again. And then going on and doing the AIS with ASM Affiliates. Um, and that's also with Shipti archaeologists present. Uh, making sure that we're doing our checks and balances there. And then kind of creating that nonprofit specifically to steward this space and applying for a form, formal curatorship agreement with, uh, DLNR and Shipti. Uh, next. Okay, so that's all I have to share this evening. So mahalo, mahalo for coming. Um, if you guys have questions, are you just one of Allah? This is our contact information, Facebook, Instagram, uh, Gmail. Mahalo.
There's a, there's a survey in the chat right now.
Okay, so we also have a survey. If folks maybe wanna share their manao anonymously. You guys can do that in the chat. Was there anything else? I saw people had their hands raised. So maybe we'll let Jared.
Yeah, thank you for that. So, so that was a very informative presentation. I hadn't seen it prior to you presenting it. So thank you for that. If someone from the group can please just re-input the contact information for Kai'au'lu Okahalu into the chat, that way we can go to questions and, uh, and, uh, it's available there in case folks weren't able to write it down. Yeah, there you go. Uh, and I said, like, like I said at the end, I will, uh, input my office information in the chat and, and representatives Kipigawa, uh, likely will as well in case something comes to mind later and, uh, you'd like to reach out to us. As, as you saw in the presentation, this really is the, the beginning of the process. So we can go to questions right now. So I'm gonna call on you individually. You can either type your question in the chat, or you can raise your hand and I will try to get to you in order. Okay, so we'll start with, uh, and, and you know, just so that, that, this is a personal thing for me, just so that we know that you're a real human being, that these public meetings, we have had, uh, issues in the past. So if it's possible, I would appreciate if you could engage your video. Before you, uh, ask your question. And then I think it would be great if you could introduce yourself and, uh, and where you're from or your connection to this place. So we'll start with Pua Obayashi.
My video, trying to get rid of the slash, it's not going. Jared, my, oh, there it is. There it is. Uh, here's, here's my quick question. Uh, Hiaka, I heard you say you're gonna cut down trees. And, um, for me, um, I'm so concerned about in, in, in our area, especially on the Lainani Ea, the, uh, peninsula out here. Uh, a lot of trees, our tree canopy has been removed and it's really affected the environment. And more worse, we have those pest companies that are coming in and getting rid of the birds, uh, because of the hotel next door, the guests are complaining about the bird song in the morning. And bird song in Kahului is one of our main things. And it's so sad not to hear the birds anymore. But, um, removing the trees, removing their habitat, and then impacting climate change is just one of my, my, uh, concerns. And so I always perk up when somebody talks about cutting down trees. So I wanted to double check with you, you know. What are you folks removing? I don't mind if it's rubbish trees, you know, like albizia. But, uh, the stuff that, that really keeps the habitat and keeps the birds. Yeah, that's what I'm concerned about. Sorry for the long question.
Thank you for your lead off question.
Oh, sorry, Flor.
Or someone in the group take that?
Yeah, so I can take a stab and then maybe Philip and Luca can chime in because you guys are the bird and the forest people. Um, so the trees will be cut methodically. Um, so just in this front space here, none of those trees are native. We got holi koa, how, which is kind of, you cannot see from that photo for that vantage point, but there's a bunch of how that sort of getting out of hand. Uh, what was the other one? Like Formosia, like some kind of invasive koa, not a native koa. Um, but none of those trees sort of bring value. Me talking to one of the neighbors over there, she had to complain to the state to cut it because no sun was coming in. And so there was an abundance of kind of like moss growing on the sidewalk one summer and multiple people had fell and slipped. And one person had to go surgery because the fall was so bad. So cutting that trees in the front, at least so the sun can come and kill all of that mossy growth on the sidewalk is important. But I mean, you can just keep trimming and trimming, right? Like the problem is gonna keep continuing. So if we can just cut and then just mulch it and maybe plant things that do add value in that space, I think that would be more appropriate. But I'll let Phil and, or Luca, whatever, whoever like jump in for that one.
Okay, uh, um, I'll say something real fast. So one of the things we do wanna do and incorporate is to make space for native trees, which will bring hopefully native birds. Cause, uh, the shama sounds so beautiful. The bobo sounds so beautiful. But they are also major spreaders of, uh, other invasive trees like inkberry, which is all over fiddlewood that we see everywhere. The macaranga trees that are everywhere. And they're not like a prime habitat for a lot of those birds that we do hear. The trees that we will be cutting down in front, like shifler, holi koa, silky oak. They're, they're not a prime habitat. What we do, and this is where Luca, what we do want, this is kind of where Luca can jump in, is we wanna bring habitat for other native birds and creating this loti again will bring birds like a lai'ula, like kea. And Luca can talk more about that.
Mahalo, Nui, for your question. And just like everybody said, it'll be in stages. So the birds that we do have, both, um, the non-native ones won't be suddenly evicted out of their home. They're not gonna just like suddenly have nothing there. Um, but these trees, once they are gone, we are hoping to plant back the native trees so that as like just a progression, like as something comes down, we can build it back up. And Ahui Manu has the sounds that once we're there, we're very different from what we have, but is very beautiful. Like the, um, if you go down to Hamakua or Kuvainui Marsh, you could hear the a lai'ula, which is a mud pen and the like, uh, and you can also hear the io that, um, are filling up those wetland spaces. And that's the, that's the voice that was there. And we are that my daytime job that I do is working with birds, not mosquitoes. And so we are working to, um, bring down mosquito population so that once we have an active forest here in Oahu that can support maybe EEV, Apapana, having the Oahu Amaki come back down from up in the mountains. We can have those native spaces, those birds that who really truly have like long genealogical ties to this space, travel home and be able to fill our soundscapes again. And be, and those birds also have a great relationship with our native plants that they are the best for pollination. They are the best for keeping these plants around that help recharge our waters, that help make sure that we have water into the future. And, um, yeah. Anything else?
Mahalo. I mean, that's, that's music.
Thank you. Thank you very much for that. And thank you for your question. So next we have Jessie Makainai followed by Jerry. And again, if you would like to ask a question, you can either raise your hand or just say I have a question in the chat. Go ahead, Jessie.
Hello, Senator. My name is Jessie Makainai. My maiden name is Chong. My Ohana has been in Kahului through Waikana for over two hundred years. Some of you may know my kupuna, Jackie Chong. She was one of my last living relatives and these store, which was, um, of course, hygienics, hygienic dairy, which was once the, okay. Um, I just wanted to maybe not ask the question, but add on to Flor's commentary about the tree. I don't know if there, Hiaka, are there albizia in this area as well?
There's a few, but not, not in this parcel that we're talking about today. More on the upstairs by the, the ridge.
Okay. Do you feel like also being there will create like a mitigation plan to prevent the albizia spreading into this area since we're
There is potential for spread. Yes.
Okay, great. Uh, Jerry Villanueva?
Maybe I'll be, okay. So I live on Hennel Place.
So, I live on Heno Place, I'm the last house at the very top of the hill. So, I've lived here, my family, for thirty years, so my kids have grown up playing on both sides of the of uh, I guess the streams, and up in the, up in the two waterfalls. And uh, I've just, it sounds good, we, I've seen all the, uh, the walls. I've noticed how that there's right angles as I'm walking along the trails here. And I'm, it, it's not good that you're up, you guys are working to preserve uh, the area, but I'm just concerned like is there like a contact person that if we're, if I see something that maybe I don't agree with, or there's some, something I have any concerns, or, you know, anybody in the neighborhood. Is there like a contact number or contact person that we can uh, speak with and then uh, express our concerns?
Yeah, sure, so we are accountable to the State Historic Preservation Division and to the DLNR. So the enforcement arm of DLNR is DoCare. Um, if you see anything you don't like, you can call six four three DLNR. DLNR also has an app, I, I think it's called DLNR Tip. And you can take a photograph or a video and upload it, and make a complaint anonymously. You could always, you know, make, make your concerns known to either Lisa or, or Jared. Um, you know, they're also here to kind of help facilitate some of that stuff. But ultimately, we are accountable to Shipti and DLNR.
Okay, so just DLNR, what about you folks, just to talk to you guys, if you guys are down there, say, hey.
Okay.
You know, so, so like, so easy contact information, cuz DLNR, that's like a big organization, who we gonna talk to over there? So, something like, right now, I'm talking to you, and I could say, hey, wait. You guys are building a road here, or look, what is this? You guys putting gravel over here, what is, you guys making a road, you know, things like that, that's what our concern is. Or what, there's lights now, you know, things like that, you know, that's something that we wanna be able to like ex, you know, know who to talk to, rather than some uh, phone number, and you don't know who we're talking with.
Okay, yeah, I can share my number with you, I'll send it to you privately in the chat, if that's okay.
Okay, well, yeah, it's something that not only me, but you know, the rest of the neighborhood will be able to like, uh, be able to access and, and uh, um, talk freely, I mean, I'm willing to help too, cuz you know, I've, again, my kids grew up walking around this place, playing around, play, walking through the area. And I've even seen like up at the very top on the ridge, there's like barbed wire growing through the ironwood tree, so this must have been a pasture laner, and so it's, it's just neat to hear like the history and how, you know, you guys are preserving what, what once was. And so, I mean, I'm really enthusiastic with that.
Mahalo, are you on that um, Kamuhau's email list?
Um, I got the emails, and that's how come I'm, I, I was able to like uh, zoom in on you, uh, this, this afternoon.
Okay, so I will share my phone number through that uh, that email list that Kamu and Noel have, I think there's about fifty-five residents on there, um, and then that way it can be distributed through that channel, if that's okay?
Yeah, okay, that's why.
Okay.
Thank you.
You guys can call us and, and you know, let us know anytime, it's fine, thank you.
And uh, I think at this point, uh, I would like, Regina, can you jump on and talk about, a little bit about your, the, the DLNR State Historic Preservation Division's oversight over the site, and then the requirements that are, that will be um, necessary for this organization or any organization if they pursue uh, the different steps in taking uh, responsibility for the, for the space.
Sure, aloha, this is Regina, um, I'm at the State Historic Preservation Division, so um, yeah, there, we have something, a, a more formal um, agreement called a stewardship or curatorship agreement, and that is a binding document that kind of outlines the allowable um, practices uh, that can be done um, as part of management and mitigation um, on this, this site. Because it does have, um, you know, it's a national register site, right, and it has an S I H P number as well. So um, it has a certain like uh, restrictions of what can be done, um, which is why I think Shipti is asking proactively for an archaeological inventory survey level of documentation. Um, sorry, I'm kind of going off um, on a tangent here, but I'll come back to, to that question. Um, so the archaeological inventory survey level of documentation would really seek to document the current um, the current conditions at the site, you know, the portions that are intact, the portions that are kind of falling apart, and, and make um, mitigation recommendations as an update to the existing national register um, nomination that we have. So, we need that data to, to be able to figure out like how to best move forward. Um, so proactively asking for an AIS, I think that's something that Shipti wants for the documentation purposes. With that said, with that documentation, then it can inform um, preservation and like possibly restoration um, procedures moving forward into the future. Um, also considering all of those things, which are like highly technical, I guess, um, we still have the, the issue of um, vegetation management, and like Phil, Luca, and Hiaka said, a lot of the vegetation that's directly affecting these places are um, non-native, definitely non-native um, species that we have there, both uh, flora and fauna. So, a lot of challenges here for sure, um. We are looking for, to enter into a formal stewardship or curatorship agreement with the organization that is gonna be stewarding this site, um, it's gonna be uh, I think a subset, and Hiaka correct me if I'm, I'm misst- misstating this in any way. But it'll be an organization that's kind of a subset within Kailua or separate from Kailua Kahalu'u. Um, and that's the organization that will be responsible for the stewardship. Once that stewardship agreement is finished, um, then it goes to BLNR, I mean, not finished, and drafted, finished and drafted, then it goes to the Board of Land and Natural Resources where there are consideration um, on approval of the stewardship agreement. Now, that's like all on the, I wanna say on the back end, um, and once that is done and formally uh, like put into place, then the large groups can go in there and, and start um, doing active management and mitigation. But for now, without that agreement, um, it's recommended that the groups are smaller so that it's more manageable, I guess, so to speak, and you can like kind of more uh, be more focused and target specific areas. Um, yeah, oya vole, I think for now. I, I hope that answered the question, if it didn't, ask me the question again, and I'll try again in less words.
Well, thank you, thank you for that, Regina. Uh, we have a, a couple of questions in the chat, but I do want to ask Hiaka and then Regina if you would like to um, also fill in uh, a specific question that was, I think, mentioned by Jerry that we also received some comments on from the neighbors when we went through the neighborhood on Sunday. So, in case there are some folks who um, uh, would like an answer on that more broadly in the meeting, we might as well just get it out now, and then I can move to the questions in the chat. Uh, Hiaka, there were specific concerns from the neighbors about uh, the potential for installing a road into the entrance to the site, and then also uh, lights in the area. Can you explain that, and can you explain uh, your intentions there, and then uh, Regina, in terms of overall, you know, monitoring and, and um, uh, administration of the, the oversight of the work that's done at the site, maybe your input on that?
Yeah, sure, okay, mahalo. So, where the comment about the road is coming from is I did mention to one of the community members that the plan was to cut that front overgrowth of trees, um, mulch in place so that we didn't have to deal with the con- broken concrete underneath, and then potentially over time put gravel in there to have a way for us to have one people safely access the site. Because right now, you kind of either have to go through all of those big bushes in a front, or you gotta go down that grassy hill, which is kind of a a, you know, a slope over there, and I have seen people fall and slip, um, trying to walk down that hill. So it was a way to have people safely get in, especially if we're gonna have keiki coming in. I don't wanna be responsible if they fall and slip on that hill. Um, another purpose for that was a way for us to bring in the equipment, because this is thirteen point seven two acres of I don't know, fifty plus years of overgrowth. Um, and so there are some really big trees back there that are disturbing some of the lo'i or the walls. Um, and so I was just anticipating that we would need to get large equipment in there in order to properly do what needs to be done. Um, the lights, the lights were um, sort of an offering as a way to have a deterrent to kind of any kind of illegal congregating or any kind of behavior, right? Like if you're there to dump illegally in the dark, right, nobody can see you, but if we install like a solar light and you're trying to get in there, the light goes off, somebody sees it kind of like at your house, you know, where you have lights outside in case somebody walked by the light turn on, you know, eh, who's outside, right? That, that was kind of the intent for, for those two things, um, the lights are not necessarily necessarily, they, they were gonna be a courtesy um, to address some of the concerns about people coming in and doing any kind of stuff. Yeah, mahalo.
Okay, thank you for that. I, like I said, I, I know that there has been some concerns, so let, let's just get it out and have a discussion about it. Uh, Regina, in terms of the installation of, you know, in, in terms of these types of steps, at what point in the process from the state standpoint, would you be uh, wo- would the state be entertaining those types of options? What type of input would the community have uh, at that point, and uh, where do you see that in uh, you know, in the process going forward?
Mahalo, um, yeah, so I think um, with, with an issue like lights, uh, or even gravel, we would wanna know those upfronts, um, so that those can be included in a stewardship agreement. Just to be sure that, you know, we're all on the same page with regard to the types of activities and undertakings that will be occurring here as well as um, the appropriate mitigation measures um, that, that will be taking place as well. And we wanna be sure for our intents and purposes that whatever is done is not gonna affect um, negatively the integrity of the site in any way, um, such that it would compromise the national register nomination. And if it does, then we would need to, you know, take a look at how we're gonna mitigate um, that, that effect. So, I'm sorry, that's a lot of government jargon, I know, um, but basically what I'm saying is that we will wanna know proactively upfront what activities will be taking place, that way we can plan for them in the future, um. With regard to community input, I'm not as sure on that end, sorry, this is like the first time I've, that I've really been this involved in a stewardship or curatorship agreement of this sort. Um, so I'm not as sure about the community engagement portion, I would have to go back and look at it from my end. I do know that, you know, if there are concerns that the community has, you guys have Hiaka's um, contact information, I think Jennifer also provided her contact information, um. The six four three DLNR, it goes to a live person, um, and it eventually gets routed to us, usually within a few hours, at the most twenty-four hours, and typically if it's anything related to Kahalu'u lo'i, then it will come to me. Um, so, we do get the information, um, it does, you know, make its way through the administrative chain. Um, and uh, also, Kailua or Kahalu'u, I believe they have an email address. You can also use our DLNR app um, to, to, you know, take photos or videos of anything that's going on, and then submit it anonymously. Um, and my contact information is on Shipti's website as well, I think Senator has my um, my work email address as well, I'll put it in the chat for everyone, so if there's ever any concern uh, at least from the community side, you know, we, we wanna be transparent, that's why we're working so hard to, to have this kind of um, engagement, yeah. So, I'll put my email in the chat, um, utilize the channels that I talked about and that Hiaka mentioned, also Senator put his contact information in the chat as well. Um, yeah, you can email all of us, you can email one of us, whichever, whichever is best for you, mahalo.
Thank you for that. We, we have, I wanna uh, acknowledge there were multiple questions asked by Ohana Yokepukararo, but Representative Kitagawa wanted to uh, she has her hand raised, so we're gonna take her out of turn, cuz she's an organizer of this meeting, and then we'll go back to the chat questions.
Thank you, Senator, I just wanted to mention something very quickly, um, based off of what um, Regina had mentioned, so she had mentioned that the um, process and the curatorship agreement uh, application would go to the Board of La- Land and Natural Resources. So I just wanted to highlight that at that point, the community will also be able to publicly comment on that, because that would be a public meeting, so when the application goes through that process you all will have the opportunity to share your support, your concerns, your thoughts, whatever it is um, as it goes through that process, so, you know, you, you obviously have everyone's contact information in the chat that you can reach out to, but there will be another step in this process before it officially gets approved with the curatorship agreement um, through that, which is a public hearing, um, that takes public testimony to the board. So I just wanted to point that out, so that people knew there was another step where you can voice um, your thoughts on this.
Okay, great, and then, you know, uh, the, the idea with this meeting and, and all this proper preparatory work, and going through the neighborhood is so that, once it gets there, you know, hopefully everyone will have had input, and we have a plan that everybody in the neighborhood and in the broader community uh, can get behind, because cutting down all those trees and maintaining just, just even maintaining the grass over there, I know is an effort, and we're gonna need everybody's support, so, so that's the idea. Uh, uh, for Hiaka and the group, the uh, Yokepukararo Ohana asked basically three questions in the chat. One is, do you intend to include uh, the St. Louis School and uh, Ohana Glasgow, along with some of the other Ohana who have been active in uh, also pursuing um, responsibility and, and doing active caretaking for that space, and does your plan contemplate uh, native cultural practices that uh, perhaps already are going on in the area, or that um, or, or that uh, some of the community might intend to engage in?
Yeah, sure, mahalo, so um, I'm gonna hit the cultural access one first, so it is state public lands, right, so native Hawaiians have right to access the land for cultural purposes, and I think that's more of like a Shipti or DLNR question, um, like, yes, we will have curatorship eventually, potentially, um, that's not set in stone yet, right, so we're only allowed ten people to kind of do our work, so if other Ohana or other community members come, or hikers, hunters, um, I don't have the power to tell them they can't come, right? Um, actually encourage cultural practices by community members, cuz that's strengthening connection to Aina. Um, and that's part of what we wanna see in this space. Um, the other question was including St. Louis, and I think that's another question I wanted to discuss with Shipti. Like, let's say, in the scenario that whatever new nonprofit gets birthed applies for the curatorship application, we were told before we cannot put two people on the curatorship, right? So then talking to Shipti, are there other examples of similar spaces where multiple groups have, have shared the space, or, or how does that work, right? And so, I don't have the answers for that. But I think it's appropriate that we have community partnerships, right, not only St. Louis, but maybe um, Koala Foundation, Key Project has expressed interest in also um, having presence on the site, so it's definitely having a discussion um, with Shipti. it's definitely having a discussion um with Shipti and letting us know, like, what are some different options and pathways that we could incorporate all of the different groups in our community? Mahalo. And then Jerry's had his hand up for a long time, by the way.
Well, I was just waiting to see if Regina had a uh had something to say on that, but I guess.
Yeah, when I first moved in.
Back to Jerry again. Go ahead.
When I first moved in here thirty years ago, that place where all the grass is, that was a parking lot. There was gravel over there. And then uh I think that was Brian Cook, the developer that built these houses. And then uh there there's remnants. I guess there was a hut over there too. I guess that's what the wood is over there by the by the tree, by the uh uh banana trees. And so yeah, and then it sounds like turning it back into another parking lot. It looks nice right now with all the grass. And then the neighbors down there have been taking care of it. And then um you just got to be careful walking down, because this is nature. You gonna be, you gonna be hiking. Little kids have been walking out there. My little kids from what? They was two years old, three years old, they hike there. My mom used hiked up in that trail. Now she's ninety-three years old. But uh so, yeah. There's, it's gonna be slippery. You just gotta be careful. So I don't know about putting gravel and turning it back into a parking lot. That's that's what I, that's that's all I gotta say. But the place is beautiful and I'm, I like what you guys are are planning to do to preserve it, because um that I see like back enough by the waterfall, I see like the the walls. And uh it's something that needs to be preserved. And then there's water coming out of a puka in that uh at the very top by the waterfall. And uh some guys even like said, it's it's like portable water. They have seen them drink it, but I never did. But still, this place um is beautiful and I'm glad that you guys want to keep it that way and preserve uh what was in the past. That's all.
Thank you. Uh there was a suggestion here in the chat that uh we include the city and H P D to get their input and suggestions on how to manage traffic and some of those interactions. Uh Hiiyaka, is that something that I can ask the group to commit to?
Um you want us to reach out to H P D regarding parking? Not really understanding, sorry.
I guess the 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 comment was in relation to the the issue about um uh activities that could take place on the site uh that you folks don't have control over. And then also the suggestions about the lights and things like that. I think that's what, oh, and traffic and traffic.
Okay.
Uh, yeah.
It's my understanding that H P D doesn't have jurisdiction over that particular parcel, because it's state-owned. Um though CARE is the enforcement agency. Um a- and it's my understanding that police have been called before and they sort of said, we can't do anything. It's state land. Um I mean, it's worth a shot, though. And seeing if if it makes a difference. Of course, if someone sees police, they're going to be deterred. So um if you do see something, I do en- encourage calling H P D. Um but I don't think they can do any enforcement.
So I uh I'll I'll jump in on this one, too. I think the suggestion is to just reach out to H P D to see if they have any input on how best to approach those issues uh and address them. And so that's something that I can commit to helping to engage in a dialogue with uh on as well. I think I want to make sure I got the, I didn't miss any in the chat. And then we'll move to Mr. Yoshinaga, who has his hand up. Okay. Uh there was a request uh for perhaps a copy of a recording uh of this meeting for folks who might not uh be in attendance right now. And so Chelsea, are we recording this meeting?
We are recording this meeting. Um and I can send that out once it uh downloads to my computer.
Uh if any members are interested in um sharing a copy, uh a recording of this meeting with other members of the community, you can reach out to Representative Kitagawa or I, and then we can furnish that for you. Uh and on that note, thank you, Mr. Yoshinaga, for your patience.
Thank you. Um am I to understand that a curatorship agreement needs to be uh approved before work can begin, restoration effort can begin?
Regina, can you, can you take that one?
Sure, yeah. This is Regina. Um no, uh I think, I think the plan was I think for our end, we would like to enter into a formal curatorship agreement um with the understanding that that would entail a larger, more um focused, I guess, uh group of in group like larger groups undertaking really focused um mitigation measures for vegetation clearance and activities like that. But um for the sake of like maintaining the front of uh the the terrace area where it's open and it's grassy, and then you know, you have those trees that would need to be trimmed back at some point. Um just for doing maintenance of that open area. The plan is that, you know, the group could move forward with small groups of less than ten people or less. Um because we would like to ensure that um we have something more formal and binding for larger groups to guide kind of like the activities that would be going on in the future. So for now, smaller groups um working in the front, not approaching the archaeological features. Um and then once the formal curatorship agreement is entered into, then that will guide the types of activities that can be done and the sizes of the groups that can be accommodated there um in the future.
Thank you. You know, can you provide us some idea of what the uh proposed or targeted start date of this project is, this restoration project?
Yeah, sure. I I guess before I jump into that one, I just wanted to add to the previous question. Um once we kind of do get this new nonprofit up and going, it is our intention to go back to the Kahalu'u Neighborhood Board and reintroduce ourselves and ask for their blessing or support to take on a formal curatorship agreement, because I think it's very important to be transparent and get that community support and have it documented prior to us trying to go to B L N R and ask for the curatorship. Um so there will be another opportunity for community to weigh in before we get to that point. Um and then when are we looking to start? Yeah, so still waiting for the State Historic Preservation Division to give me the final permissions. Um I had permission and they asked for a few more documents. And so I have submitted everything that they requested of me. And so I'm just waiting on them to tell me that, you know, okay, you guys are good to kind of work in this space. Um so that's to be determined, but I, if you folks could fill out the survey and then put your email um in the survey, or if you want to put your email in the chat, then I can kind of blast an email out to everybody in the community. Or if you're on that Kamu Hall email list, I will also be sharing through that channel.
Thank you.
Okay. Uh does anyone else have a question?
I think Nick wanted to share a little bit from his side of things.
Okay, we have about ten minutes left. So uh if you have a question or a question pops up again, just let us know. Otherwise, we'll let Nick go and then maybe we'll uh end a little early and give you folks back your time.
Hi, everyone. I was mostly just going to respond to the previous question in terms of uh whether there needed to be a stewardship agreement in place prior to any restoration work. Um so I'll I'll speak from the archaeological perspective. So aside from any any vegetation clearance um before anything can happen to the site itself, to any of the terraces or anything, there needs to be um an updated archaeological inventory survey and a preservation or restoration plan, which necessarily requires going out and getting input from the community on those plans. Um so so those, you know, there's definitely going to be an opportunity for people to comment on, to be engaged in that process uh before anything happens to to the archaeological site itself.
Okay, uh are there any other questions? Okay, there are a number of links in the chat right now, including the group's email and then our contact information. And so if everyone is is satisfied, uh please let us know again if you'd like a copy of the meeting. And if you have other questions, please reach out to us. On that note, I'll uh turn it back over to everyone uh uh for some closing remarks. Representative Kitagawa?
Thank you, um Senator, and thank you, everyone, for coming tonight and for sharing your questions and, you know, putting things in the chat. Um as we all kind of mentioned, you know, we really want this to be sort of an open process where the community is involved and the community feels like they um are getting their questions answered and also having a voice in this process. So thank you, you know, to Hiiyaka and all of the team who is here tonight, sharing this information was very great and um learned, I learned a lot as well. Um but you can feel free to reach out to my office. I put my contact info in um the chat as well. And so feel free to reach out if you have questions or need to be connected to anyone who is on this town hall. But thank you for spending your evening with us tonight.
Okay, we'll go to Regina and then Nick, and then I'll let Hiiyaka close us out.
Yeah, mahalanoi, everyone. I really appreciate the manao that we shared tonight and everyone's patience as well. I know um how difficult this is. And uh yes, Shipti is fully aware of um of how neglected this space has been. And so we really want to make the process um proactive and, you know, a community-driven kind of thing um when it comes to restoring this space as well. So mahalanoi for attending. I really do appreciate it.
Yeah, I'd also like to thank everybody um for uh sharing their perspective on the site. It it's a really special area. I I'm really excited to see um see it not be neglected and taken care of. But also, you know, it takes, it's it's a lot of responsibility to to care of this place. Um so I'm happy to help how I can and support the efforts that are out there. Um and I look forward to uh seeing things move forward. Thank you.
So yeah, just echoing what everybody else said. I really appreciate all of you attending. I appreciate everybody engaging and kind of voicing some of their concerns, because it helps us to be better stewards of this place. Um and so I encourage you to please feel free to contact us. And and you know, just even if it's not something kind of nice or something that you don't want to share, like, please share with us, because we want to address as many of the concerns as possible. Um so you have our our email, you have my phone number. Please feel free to contact us. Um we're your neighbors, we're nearby. So yeah, mahalo.
Okay, great. Uh seven minutes to spare. We'll give back to you, folks. Thank you very much again for taking the time. And uh have a great evening. Aloha, everyone.